7:31. All right, everybody, we're going to call this meeting to order. This is the meeting of the Highland Park Planning Board at the Borough of Highland Park. It's June 12th, 2025, at 7:31 PM, since our clock is broken. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice that this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on February 3rd, 2025, and was posted on the Borough website at www.hpborough.com and on the bulletin board at Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to the left and to the right, and as always, please remember to speak into your microphones. All right, first order of business is Pledge of Allegiance, if everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. And while at our last meeting, we had the chance to introduce our new board member, Ken Ho. I want to officially welcome him to the board's morning. Thank you. All right, so first up, we're going to do a quick approval of our meeting minutes for April 10th, 2025. Oh, I do apologize, I'm running right through this, we didn't even take roll call yet, so let's do roll call, please.
Ms. Han?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Mr. Chin?
Yeah.
Ms. Hadhazy? Mr. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Hope?
Present.
Mr. Lennaros?
Here.
Mr. Malay?
Here.
Mr. Perlman?
Here.
Mr. Sternkardt now?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Kuzanso?
Here.
Mr. Koch? And, I'm sorry, Mr. F. Clifford Gibbons?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we'll turn to our draft April 10th, 2025, regular meeting minutes, and see if anyone has any comments or changes we'd like to make to the draft notes. Yes, go ahead.
There's a roll call. It's where it says absent. And Hossi. But there's other people who are also not, are also absent. Either strike the absent, but follow people.
Who else was missing from the meeting?
Brescher?
Scott's listed.
Kuzanso?
Right, he's there. And Roger was not with us. Were there any other members who weren't here? Anyone want to fess up to not being here at the last meeting?
Do we need to have? Do we even have the absent?
Oh, well, usually we keep the list of the absent persons at the meeting just as a record, so that we know for future votes, who was there, who was not. So, anyone else? More? I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's in two places. And we're calling this a webinar.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your comment in that in the lower section in absent, the names are missing.
Right.
I was just looking at the upper box to see how they're listed here, but they're not here. So we should, we should have the two absent lists match. Thank you, I didn't even see it when you pointed it out to me, so I'm sorry about that.
And in the second paragraph, it says the webinar link. Is this webinar, or would be better to say meeting? Meeting ID.
I don't know the technical term. Does anyone have any thoughts?
It's probably a webinar, because on a webinar, the default setting is that you don't see the attendees to the meeting, you only see the panelists, which would just be one entity, which would read this. Whereas if it was a meeting, you would see a list, it would be like all the, all participants online. You would see the.
Well, we do now have public interaction and the ability to participate by Zoom, so would that make it a meeting then?
I don't know, because in a webinar, you can still have people ask questions, the panelists, you just have to basically approve them to do it. It's basically on Zoom, you have two options, you can either create a meeting or a webinar. I don't know what this actually is, but based on the format, it's probably a webinar.
It says webinar, Gabriel.
Well, yes, that's what we're debating, whether it should be webinar. It's webinar, okay, so we'll stick with webinar then?
That's probably correct, based on the format. Unless you're going in and manually changing a bunch of settings, it's.
Okay.
We haven't finalized the statute in terms of electronic public meetings, so maybe going with this webinar will be the wise thing to do at this time. Next year, or later this year, who knows?
We are constantly mindful of the ever-changing technological prowess and statutory language that we strive to follow. Oh, and we have another set of absences on the, on the other side that we also need to match very much. All right. Any other comments? All right, so with that, I'll solicit a motion to approve the minutes as we've just pronounced to be modeled.
I'll second.
All right, who said, who made the motion? Alvin made the motion, and Jeff seconded it. All right.
Mr. Brescher? Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Ms. Hadhazy? Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Lennaros?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Perlman?
Yes.
Mr. Sternkardt now?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Han?
Yes. Very good, all right, thank you very much, everybody. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing on round four of the Housing Elements and Fair Share Plan of the Borough's master plan, which is absolutely riveting stuff, but all joking aside, very, very important for our master plan and the town as a whole moving forward. So with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to Elaine to give a presentation on what the proposal currently is.
Madam Chairman, I just wanted to say that I reviewed the notice for tonight's meeting. I'm sure Mr. Thomas did as well, but everything is legally sufficient as to form and content. The board can exercise perfect. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I forgot what I was about to say. I'm Elaine Klishem, I work for Clark, Kate, and Hints. We are the Affordable Housing Planners for Highland Park. This is, as Chairwoman Hand said, an element of the master plan that we are conducting a public hearing on tonight. That does require a 10-day public notice pursuant to NJS A4055D-13, which I think is what you just said was, was done sufficiently. What I am going to race through tonight is a brief overview of what's in the overall plan, and then we'll take a slightly more detailed look at the elements that have been put together for fourth round compliance. And then I'm happy to answer any questions. My understanding is we have a resolution tonight that we will vote on and that will be memorialized, and I'll get into why, but it has to be done tonight, because this has to be filed with the court within 48 hours.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I don't know how much people know about the Mount Laurel doctrine in the history of affordable housing in New Jersey. It's a series of court decisions that basically said every town has to plan for its fair share of the housing that will accommodate low and moderate income households that want to come and live in the town. The original two Mount Laurel decisions led to the passage of the Fair Housing Act, and actually also of the State Planning Act. We had a state plan because of the Fair Housing Act and the Mount Laurel decisions. I think it might be useful to define what a round is. When the act was first passed, a round was six years. And every six years, a town would have to renew what it, what its compliance plans were. They would get a new obligation and have to publish a new plan that said how they were going to fulfill that obligation. That got stretched to 10 years, which is what it is now. And as the Council on Affordable Housing, which was created to oversee such things, mired itself in more and more administrative mess, the court stepped in finally in 2015 and basically changed, transferred jurisdiction for oversight of affordable housing matters back to the courts. And when they did that, they had a process by which towns could get themselves certified to be in compliance with their requirements, but they never published a methodology for calculating the obligations. So the second round obligations had already been determined. It was the third round obligations that were a complete mystery to everybody. And they were negotiated with an advocacy organization called Fair Share Housing Center, kind of behind closed doors, and delivered to a town and its public once everything was a done deal. In 2024, Governor Murphy signed an amendment to the Fair Housing Act that included a very specific methodology for calculating obligations. So those are now not negotiated behind closed doors anymore. They are, in fact, anybody can calculate them. The law charged the Department of Community Affairs with doing those calculations and publishing them. The law was very clear that the obligations that were published would be advisory, not binding, and a town could either stipulate to them or stipulate to a different number as long as the number they stipulated to was calculated using the methodology in the law. So Highland Park has chosen to stipulate to the numbers that were published by DCA. And there's a whole series of deadlines. You had to adopt the resolution stipulating to that by the end of January. People could challenge it, and that had to be done by the end of February. Challenges had to be resolved by the end of March. And here we are, coming right up on the end of June, when actual housing plans have to be adopted and filed. Most towns had no plan in place for their fourth round obligations. So it has been a mad scramble this spring for a lot of people to get things together by June 30th. The process that was set forth in the law means you're still in court, unfortunately. We talked about the municipal resolution. Because you're still in court, there has to be a declaratory judgment complaint filed. You've got an order stipulating fixing your obligation, and ultimately, when you submit this plan or a different plan, if it needs to be amended, you'll get an order certifying that you are in compliance. So moving on to the obligation that you stipulated to was, and I have, I will define these, a present need of 209 units. Present need is defined as substandard housing units inhabited by households of low and moderate income who already live here. And we'll, I'll come back to this big present need number, and we'll talk about that a little later. Your prospective need number, which is the number of units that you need to create for families that want to move in, is 45, which is a nice small number. So what's in the housing plan? In the front is just a riveting history of affordable housing in New Jersey that goes on much longer than I just did. There's also a section on the Borough's affordable housing history. There's a section on affordability requirements, which is basically what defines affordable housing and what defines somebody who is eligible for affordable housing. Then there is a list of requirements from both the Fair Housing Act and from a December 2024 administrative directive from the court, which in some places either exceeds the requirements of the Fair Housing Act or actually contradicts them. And I think we just got a judgment this morning from Judge Loogie in Mercer County.
Yes.
Saying, yeah, of course, this is ridiculous, whatever the directive said. It had to do, I think, probably with the ordinances.
Yes, I mean, it's, I don't have the opinion.
I haven't seen it either.
But, no, he did make the determination that you're indicating, and the ordinances were all kind of thrown, you know.
Yeah, well, because the law says you have to have draft ordinances, and the director says you have to have adopted your ordinances. So, and there are lots of places where they are at odds like that. Anyway, there is a directive, and it has a list of requirements. So they, they are listed in here, whether or not we, based on this opinion this morning, actually have to adhere to that. Then there is a demographic analysis of the borough that's required by the Fair Housing Act, and it's just census numbers, it's kind of a snapshot in time of the borough's demographics, housing units, households, individuals, income, jobs, things like that. Most people don't find that kind of thing very interesting. We have started putting two things into that section that are not required by law, but we think are interesting for municipalities to look at. On page 24, for everybody who brought their copy, we have a comparison of the number of small versus large housing units with the number of small versus large households. And that, in a lot of towns, has highlighted a big mismatch. There are a lot more, and this is a national trend, national demographic trend. There are a lot more smaller households than there are smaller units. And that's a long-term policy issue for a municipality to consider. The other thing that we put in is something called a jobs-housing ratio, which is on page 27. That is a look at the balance between people who work here and people who live here. Unsurprisingly, because Highland Park is right next to a big regional job center, your jobs-housing ratio is quite low. There's nothing wrong with that. We work in a municipality where the jobs-housing ratio is almost four to one. That means that there are like 25,000 people commuting into town every day to work. So we've added those, they're not required, but we do think that they're interesting and can be informative in the long term. Then the third portion of the, of the plan does talk about the Borough's affordable housing compliance across all rounds. The new law requires us to summarize the current status of every affordable housing unit in the borough, whether they were for prior round or third round, or if they've been built for fourth round. We need to say what the current status is, so we have done that. And the good news is the borough is very much in compliance with its prior and third round obligations. There are some formula obligations, you have to have a certain number of rental units, a certain number of family units, a certain number of family rental units. You're not allowed more than a certain number of age-restricted or senior units, so those are all calculated in there as well. And then the part we're really going to talk about tonight is the discussion of the fourth round. The rehabilitation of two, rehabilitation obligation of 209, I'll come back to. The prospective need is 45, and the good news is you all have already planned for that. There is, there's nothing new that you need to do. The two redevelopment tracts that are, I guess, likely to come before the planning board first, both have affordable housing units built into them, enough that you can fulfill this round's obligation, and you carry some into the next round. The other thing you have is a bunch of units that are held over from the prior and third round from the senior development, right down here, if I'm not disoriented. You're entitled only to claim a maximum number of senior units per round. It's a percentage of your overall obligation. So you claim some for your prior round, and you claim some for your third round, and you are claiming some for your fourth round, and you actually still have a couple left over that I don't even know whether will be eligible for credit in the fifth round. So you have those, you have the family rental units from your two redevelopment areas. And the other thing that happened with the new law is bonuses got completely restructured. You used to be able to get a bonus credit for every rental unit. Those are gone. There's now a whole list of bonus credits that you can claim for various different kinds of units, special needs units, units developed by a nonprofit such as Habitat for Humanity, units developed with contributions from the municipal, all kinds of things. You are claiming bonuses for redevelopment units. So it is a half a bonus per affordable unit for any unit produced in a redevelopment area or through redevelopment of commercial properties into mixed-use or residential properties. So on page, I don't have it. And I have to thank Chris for letting us use his aerial for the redevelopment areas. So page 43 lists the three compliance mechanisms, the senior units, track C of the redevelopment plan, and track A of the redevelopment plan gives you 34 units, 11 permissible bonuses gets you to 45. The rest of track A that is not being used in this round will be used in the fifth round. And you perhaps noticed the absence of Gabriel Estates anywhere in this plan. When rental bonuses were available, we had planned to put the Gabriel Estates units in here. There are no longer rental bonuses available, so it was more advantageous to the borough to leave them out and put these redevelopment units in. So they will still create affordable units, and we will probably look at those for the fifth round, but that's why they're not in here. We acknowledge that in the front of the plan, so that we can add them or put them in the next round if we need to. Again, there are formula obligations, you have to have a certain number of rental units, family units. But the new thing about the fourth round is half of your very low-income units in the fourth round have to be available to what's called families with children, which is a new phrase in the law. It used to be just families, now it's families with children. That's not specified what qualifies as a unit available to a family with children. We have interpreted that to mean units with two or more bedrooms. So we have calculated that separately, just to be sure that that, you are in compliance with that as well. And then I'll go back to rehab in a minute. The final part of the plan is how the borough administrates all its affordable housing programs. It's your affordable housing ordinance, your development fee ordinance, your affirmative marketing plan, trust fund and spending plan, I'll talk about the spending plan in a minute, the resolution appointing the municipal housing liaison, who I see is not here tonight, the agreement with CGPNH, your administrative agent, all the things that come together to help administer your affordable housing programs. Your spending plan is basically a plan for how you spend your affordable housing trust funds. Affordable housing trust funds typically are development fees. The developer will pay a fee based on the value of development, and that money goes into a trust fund that can only be used for affordable housing purposes. The borough has chosen not to charge a fee on residential development, which is at a municipality's option. The state requires a fee to be levied on non-residential development. So you have not had non-residential development to date, but you are likely to have some going forward in your redevelopment areas. So we have budgeted a small amount in fees to come in as a result of that. And there are regulations about how those have to be spent. So once there are enough fees in there from resident, non-residential development, we'll need to set up a couple of programs to spend them appropriately. Right now, what you have in there is a partial payment in lieu of construction from the Highland Cliffs development, and that can be used for anything you need, rehab, anything else, create new units, you know, pay Habitat to do something, anything. But development fees, there are regulations on how they must be used. And then the rest of the, of the plan is actually just appendices of documentation to prove that the borough isn't lying about what it says it's going to do or has done in terms of affordable housing compliance. So I want to go back and talk about rehab for just a minute, because it is a very big number for a small town. Rehab is determined based on a couple of factors, one of which is the unit is at least 50 years old. The only thing we could think of that generated so high a number is that a lot of your garden apartment properties turned 50 in the last 10 years. So the borough does have the option of doing an exterior condition survey of every single housing unit in the borough. And there's an inspection form that would get filled out for every single one. And if the borough determines that the number of substandard units is significantly lower than that 209 number, and there's a formula for calculating how many might be occupied by low and moderate income people, you have, there is a mechanism for you to lower that number. It's a decision the borough has to make as to whether it's worth doing that. But right now, the thing about rehab is you can't really make anybody take your money. So there's money available. I think we're probably going to work with CGPNH to set up a rental rehab program. CGPNH coordinates the Middlesex County owner-occupied rehab program, so I believe there's going to be some effort to market that. They use CDPG funds for that, but Borough does not pay for that. But we, that is probably the area that the borough is going to need to focus the most on, is how to defray that rehab number to the best of your ability. So the good news is your plan is solid and well in place. We don't have to worry about generating any new units that aren't already planned for. And that's really my 20-second tour of your housing plan. So I'm happy to take questions. Anything that wasn't clear? Anything that I forgot to mention?
Thank you very much for your presentation. I will say, I was on the board back when we did the third round, and I remember the conference, and I was, I'd only been on the board briefly, and I remember the conversations where there was a lot of implication of, we got a good deal because we were proactive. And I remember thinking, how is that a fair way to run any sort of number? But that's, that was the form of conversation that was had back then. Good job, Highland Park, we went light on you because you were already proactive. It was like, how is, how do you calculate affordable housing units based on how proactive the town well looks like it's being?
It did make a difference, it's amazing, you're absolutely right, it really gave you a funny feeling at times.
All right, so with that lovely observation from way back, does anyone have any comments or questions?
I have a question for you. The methodology and process is not public?
It is public, it's in the new law, yes.
Is it calculation-based?
Yes, this is me, it's household count-based. So it's the change in the number of households, it's the change in the value of non-residential property, and it is some calculation of developable land as a percentage of the developable land in the whole region. So your region includes Somerset, Middlesex, and Hunterdon Counties, I believe. So the calculation is based across all those three counties, and you get allocated a percentage of the total.
Thanks.
Al, I want you to go first.
For the Middlesex County Rehabilitation, Rehabilitation Manual, just have a page.
Because I didn't get it, I have to, I have to track that down, that's right. It should say to be provided, we have asked for it. CGPNH runs that program, and I'm sure that they have been as busy as we have been, getting hundreds of housing plans done. So I will get that, and we can add that. I will try to get that in time for your adopted, your endorsed version. But the manual exists, it's just I don't have it.
Or, I'll attempt maybe to find what version this is. I mean, the county is always changing, updating things. So if you can't get the whole thing, maybe just what the today's approved.
I need to get the whole thing.
And we, you do have a date on this presentation version, so this is dated June 2nd, 2025. One presumes that I should update it, the date on the front page be modified as well?
Um, maybe. Maybe, typically that would happen only if we were going to update the text in the plan itself. We would just add to the appendices. Okay. As they become available.
One of the things you just said was about CDPG money. Seems, my memory is that parts of Highland Park are in CDPG-eligible areas, and other parts are not. So we have a, like, there's an income threshold for, if you're, you're on one side of the income threshold, that part of the area, like Woodbridge Avenue is, is now eligible for CDPG funds, but downtown Main Street is not. So is that, have any effect on the ability to use those funds across Highland Park, or are they going to be targeted only in a particular area?
I don't think they're targeted in a particular area, but you are right, they are income-controlled. Anybody who applies for the home improvement program, for example, has to be at a certain income or less, 80% of the regional median income. But I don't think that's geographically driven for this program. It may be for other CDPG programs, but for the home improvement program, it's strictly income-based.
Okay, all right. And then I guess the second question I had is, is briefly again, I appreciate brevity, is the, if someone wants to do rehabilitation and they are applying for funds, can you just sort of tell us a little bit about that process?
Sure, sure. Assume it's, assume they are the owners of the unit, and they are income-eligible. So they approach the county and say, I want to replace my roof. And the county says, great, fill out this form to demonstrate that you're income-eligible. And if they are, in fact, they sign an agreement, and there's a, you know, a contractor vetting process, but they essentially get their roof replaced using county funds. I don't know, in Middlesex County, I am going to guess that a permanent lien is put on the property that gets paid off when the property is sold. Some places, when they set up their own program, they set it up so that there's a declining balance on the lien, and after 10 years, it's forgiven. Maybe it doesn't even start declining till after five years. There are all kinds of things that if you ran a municipal program, you could do. But the county's program probably has a 10-year lien or a permanent lien that gets paid off when the property is sold.
But does that mean that someone would apply for it, or they would, they would fix the roof and then be reimbursed? Or do they get the money before they?
So the contractor would build the county.
Build the direct, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, great. How's the definition of family with children defined, is it defined?
No, no, family with children. No, there's no definition. The old rules used to say must be available to families, which that is defined as being not age-restricted and not special needs, which would be group homes.
which that is defined as being not age-restricted and not special needs, which would be group homes. Assisted living facilities are senior, for example. Supportive housing, you have quite a few supportive housing units here in Highland Park. They are, those tenants come from a different waiting list. Families is, the unit is marketed regionally openly for any family that is income-eligible to put their name on the list, apply.
And do you perceive a problem with that particular term being defined?
I, I don't know, families with children, you know, I mean, I, I don't know. We've never had a problem with the definition of family.
Anybody else? Comments, last call?
A couple, just a couple of questions and maybe just a trivial comment. So one thing that I noticed that was interesting was the, the percentage of renters in the borough and the kinds of housing units that they were living. So I think in the plan, it may be, it is, but you have like two to four and five to nine units are where, you know, at least it's more than a third of all renters are renting from. Is that, are those the garden apartments that you referenced? Because there are a lot of them were built nineteen, there's a wave of housing built nineteen fifty, nineteen eighty, and that's where a lot of the renters, a lot of the renters are living in that, in that age. But then the housing type is two to four and five to nine.
So likely.
Is it likely that's how it's defined, two to four would be uptown, a garden apartment that has four units in it?
Yeah, 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 based on the number of units in the actual, yeah.
And then, and then just, you know, just curious, because you mentioned about housing project, population projections, and you reference NJTPAs, I know I work there, so I, I can say that, just for trivia, if Carol let me. We have, we, we will, we will be adopting updated projections later this year. And for Highland Park, we're projecting sixteen thousand five hundred and sixteen population by twenty fifteen, so that's more than fifteen thousand. That was, you, you can't use those, of course, they're not adopted. But just so you know, that looks like, oh, we updated our, the whole region's population projections that we're looking at. How are throwing some more neighbors? But.
How many did you say, I'm sorry?
From sixteen thousand five hundred.
Oh, man.
But the, but the, the job, the jobs don't grow.
Yeah, so, well, so I, I'm not at all surprised to learn that. Yeah, so I'm looking to see what the population is now.
Fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-something, it's just under fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so.
Fifteen thousand people.
Good, thank you, that's actually very interesting, thank you. So you, when will you have those?
September.
Okay. After all these plans are done. Right, we actually waited to do the census work until December because the new EDS data was out in December, which really kind of crunched our schedule a lot, but we wanted to put the most recent data in.
It's a long story, but we do our population projection along with New York. So it's regional, then we downscale and downscale.
Yeah, gotcha.
Interesting. Despite your multiple statements that the contents of your not interesting, I actually found it very, very interesting to read through a lot of this in the background and the history of our town's particular statistics. So thank you for preparing that, I don't think no one read it.
My bad, my pleasure.
Alright, anyone else from the board? Alright, with that, then I'll open up the meeting to members of the public first who are present here tonight for comments. Seeing none, I'll open up the meeting to members of the public at home who maybe want to be heard.
There are no hands up.
Alright, with that then, I'll close the public commentary portion of the meeting on the round four housing element and fair share plan. And I'll take one last call for any comments or questions from the board. No, with that, I'll solicit a motion to approve the round four housing element and fair share plan has been presented to us.
Motion to approve, second.
So that was Matt and Dan. Alright, and we'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Hao.
Yes.
Mr. Ho.
Yes.
Mr. Lenaris.
Yes.
Mr. Malay.
Yes.
Mr. Krammer.
Yes.
Mr. Stern Cardno.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. And while we would.
Congratulations.
While we would normally have a resolution on this at our next board meeting, we actually have the text of the resolution tonight. Well, it is never fully complete and will be approved, we wanted to be prepared. And for timing reasons, we need to get the resolution done. So on the hope that we would approve, which we now have, we have the text of the resolution and as our council approved it.
Yes, yes, and Chairman, I reviewed the resolution and it is sufficient as the legal form and content, and the board can adopt it in the course of its affair. So I'm, go right ahead with it, especially given the timing circumstances.
Absolutely, alright, so does anyone have any comments on the resolution language, changes? Okay, then we'll take, solicit a motion to approve the resolution for our final adoption.
Second.
Alright, then we'll take a roll call. Second was Dan, oh, sorry, Paul. This side of the bed.
Everyone is eligible, everyone who voted for the adoption is eligible to vote, so I mean, everyone is eligible to vote.
Mr. Chen.
Yes.
Mr. Hao.
Yes.
Mr. Ho.
Yes.
Mr. Lenaris.
Yes.
Mr. Malay.
Yes.
Mr. Krammer.
Yes.
Mr. Stern Cardno.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes. Despite my inability to get anyone's names correctly, I appreciate everyone's vote. Alright. So that takes us to our zoning building officer report, and Scott's not here this afternoon, evening, which boarding is lost. And finally, any open discussion for the board of any past matters? Anyone have anything they want to talk about, something on your mind?
Wants to name the webinar a live stream, so.
Okay, any thoughts on that? Do we have any legal influence on?
I don't think that would be, I don't think that would be an issue again. It's, right now, right now, everything we're, we're trying to put together, I think you could use livestream as a, as a term for it. Sooner or later, we're going to, it'll be defined in the MOUL and we'll have to use that term. Right now, the reason I say this is because I'm on the committee working on it. You know, I would, if you want to call it a live stream, I would say that'd be fine. But that's as valuable as webinar, webinar as well, so.
We can say livestream webinar, we can just throw it all out there.
Yes, you could, conceivably. Livestreams, as long as it implies some participatory activity, which it does, I don't see why that would be a problem. Either, either term would be fine, but livestream is fine if you like.
This is going to be a very popular session at the New Jersey State Department of this town.
Last couple of years, because we've been working on it for a long time. Oh my God, it's one of, it's, it's the best attended. It's the best attended and usually we, we walk away, those of us who present or even listen, walk away scratching our heads.
Just keep muddling through as best as we can as a board. Alright, so with that, I will finally open up the meeting for members of the public for items not on our agenda tonight. Seeing no members of the public present, are there any members of the public at home wishing to be heard?
No.
I'm being told no. So with that, I will close the public portion of tonight's meeting and I will solicit a motion to adjourn.
I've been on the board for about ten years, and March fifth was the first time you ever did a presidential allegiance to the flyer. How did that come about?
Actually, it was suggested by either Matt, I think it was Matt, to pointed out that we should probably be doing that. And true, I've been on this board for thirteen, fourteen or something like that. And I thought to myself, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, we should be doing that, and that's how it came about.
Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't any more creative than, yeah, we should really be doing this, so now we are.
Do they do it in court?
Not in open court in general, in my experience.
I mean, we are proxy court.
Many, many public meetings, for example, governing body or boards, i- i- it's generally, i- i- is often, I don't want to say it's generally done, but I know for the, the boards I represent, it's basically done to a board. It's, there are very few exceptions. It's kind of a, well, I, I mean, I kind of like the idea, but I, I know some, I know some may not, but it's certainly nothing, it's, it makes sense because we're acting under the, we're acting under, you know, in the United States of America. So it makes perfect sense to me that we would do it.
Alright, so with that, we'll, I'll try it again, solicit a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded by Alan Williams, all in favor? Thank you very much, everybody, always a pleasure, yeah.
Nice to see you all again.